Township of Howell Planning Board Meeting, Thursday, March 4th, 2021. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to be open adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 8th, 2021, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Tri-Town News. Second, on January 8th, 2021, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on January 8th, 2021, said notice was posted in the office of the Planning Board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. Members of the public, you will have a chance to ask questions and comment on applications once the chairman opens the hearing up to members of the public. If you wish to ask questions or comment on an application, you will need to use the Raise Your Hand feature, and we will bring you into the meeting one at a time. You will need to have audio and video capability. You will be sworn in, and you will need to provide your name and address. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bavai has been excused. Mr. Dorado has been excused. And Mr. Husser has been excused. Chief Kudrick?
Here.
Mr. Leggio?
Here.
Mr. Nacastro?
Present.
Councilwoman Richmond?
Present.
Mr. Seaman?
You're muted, Rob.
Present.
Thank you. And Chairman Tannenhouse? You have a quorum. Thank you.
Thank you. Could everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? And a moment of silence for all of our first responders and those serving here and abroad.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Eileen, do we have any approval of minutes?
There's no minutes this evening.
Vouchers?
No vouchers this evening.
Correspondence?
No correspondence this evening.
Okay, we'll get to resolutions. First resolution is case number SD-2928FA. Eligible voters are Chief Kudrick, Mr. Leggio, Mr. Castro, Councilwoman Richmond, Mr. Seaman, and myself. Do I have a motion?
I have a motion to approve.
Do I have a second? Thank you. Roll call, please.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolutions memorialized. Thank you.
We have a resolution for proposed ordinance 0-21-2. Eligible voters are Chief Kudrick, Mr. Seaman, and myself.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, next resolution is proposed ordinance 0-21-5. Eligible voters are Chief Kudrick, Councilwoman Richmond, Mr. Seaman, and myself. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Councilwoman Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, next resolution is proposed ordinance 0-21-6. Eligible voters are Chief Kudrick, Councilwoman Richmond, Mr. Seaman, and myself.
So moved.
Second.
Is that the chief?
Yes.
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Councilwoman Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolutions memorialized.
Okay, first submission waiver up tonight is case number SD-2994.
Hold on. I sent out a revised agenda. We have two additional resolutions.
Okay, let me open up that document. Eileen, I'm not easily seeing it on my email here.
I don't see it either.
Is it case number 2992?
Yes.
Okay, so submission waivers for case number 2992.
Eligible voters are Chief Kudrick, Mr. Leggio, Mr. Nacastro, Councilwoman Richmond, Mr. Seaman, and Chairman Tannenhouse.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Do we have any more resolutions?
One more after this. Let me just take a roll call. Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Yes, the last resolution is for case number SD-2993, McDermott &amp; Son LLC for submission waivers. Eligible voters are Chief Kudrick, Mr. Leggio, Mr. Nacastro, Councilwoman Richmond, Mr. Seaman, and Chairman Tannenhouse.
Thank you. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolutions memorialized. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I can move on to my submission waiver?
Yes, you may. Thank you.
Okay. Submission waiver, case number SD-2994. Michael Hammer.
I believe Charlie Bell is on the call for Mr. Hammer.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, also.
You need to unmute? I'm sorry.
Bell, you're muted, and we can't see your video.
Okay. Bear with me a second.
There you go.
Laura, should we swear you in for the testimony for the submission waivers?
Sure.
Okay. Lauren Newman, do you swear affirm that the testimony provided before the board this evening will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you very much, Laura.
So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is an application for a minor subdivision. One of the lots will end up containing an existing home, and one of the lots will be available for future development. Having said that, I've had the opportunity to speak to Mr. Bell in advance tonight, as well as Mr. DeFalco, who is the engineer for the property owner. And said that we have listed the submission waivers on page three, item three, of our February 9th, 2021 review letter. And the applicant has agreed that they will provide the county planning board, they will reference the datum, and they will provide the survey. All other items, as noted, I do recommend be waived at this time for the purposes of deeming the application complete, again, because this is a minor subdivision, which would be subject to a plot plan submission ultimately for future construction. So given that, I take no exception to the granting of those waivers, provided the three other waivers, as I noted, were provided for the purposes of deeming this application complete.
Thank you.
Laura, can you just reference the checklist items that he's going to provide?
Sure, Eileen. Item 10, item 53, and item 75.
Perfect. Thank you.
Counselor, do you have anything to add?
No, I'm getting involved because Mr. Hammer's surveyor passed away. So I'm taking over the project. I just got started this week with the boundary survey. I am having some trouble finding property corner markers. And so I am, today I've been on the phone with a lot of other surveyors. Hopefully, they can provide me with some more additional information.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Anybody have any questions? If no, I'll entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio? Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bell. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Good day.
Okay, next submission waiver is case number SP-1078, New Horizon Properties LLC, please.
That one is actually off the agenda now because they submitted everything, and Laura has deemed them complete.
Got it. Okay.
And the next submission waiver for Cabin Realty is Mr. John Jackson, who was on the call, but I don't see him on here. We might want to give him a minute.
I think it's Mark Hittrich who's subbing for Mr. Jackson. Do you see him, Mark Hittrich?
I do. Thank you.
That's who it is.
Okay, for submission waivers for case number SP-1081.
Good evening. Mark Hittrich from the law firm of King Hittrich Jackson, McWeeny, and Wells for the applicant Cabin Realty LLC.
Mr. Hittrich, we don't see your video. There you go. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for having me.
Newman?
Sure. Steve, you want to just swear me in?
Sure. Lauren Newman, do you swear affirm that the testimony provided before the board this evening will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I have a February 16th, 2021 report where the submission waivers are specifically listed in item three. And it does appear that there are a lot of waivers, however, I think the board is all familiar with where the cabin restaurant is, and this is really a conversion of an existing building on the site and associated amenities. So it's sort of a reconfiguration of some of the existing improvements out there and just some changeovers. So given that, I take no exception to the granting of these waivers for the purposes of deeming the application complete.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Thanks, Steve. Roll call, please.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good day. Okay, first application before the board, case number SD-2992.
Andrew, we don't see your video.
I'm trying. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay.
Is Mr. Latrell going to be on the call, do you know?
I think he is. I wasn't sure. I didn't see him in the grouping of people visible there.
I don't see him either.
He's supposed to be here, yes.
I just sent him an email, but I don't know if we want to start or not.
I just looked to see if I had his cellphone number, so I could send him a text message,
Am I still muted, or can you hear me?
No.
Now, for the Mario Pretta application, is it the attorney we're waiting on, or an engineer?
Andrew Stockton, I'm the engineer and landlord.
Okay, then let's proceed, because I believe the attorney made communicating with Ron or Leta and said he couldn't make it, or had some conflict. So I think we're just going to proceed with Andrew tonight.
Okay. Thank you for letting me in.
Because the applicant is an individual, don't need an attorney, technically.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, should I be sworn?
Yes. Mr. Stockton, do you swear affirm that any testimony provided the board this evening will be the truth?
The whole truth and nothing but the truth. Yes, sir.
Very good. Now, Mr. Stockton, can you give us your business address?
Yes. My name for the record is Andrew Stockton. My company is Eastern Civil Engineering, LLC, 31 Grand Tour Highlands, New Jersey.
Now, Mr. Stockton, have you appeared before this board this evening in your professional capacity? I mean, have you ever appeared before this board and been qualified as an expert engineer?
Actually, yes, in Howell Township, but not in the past several years. But yes, in Howell Township, I've appeared before the Planning Board and the zoning Board in the past for different projects. And actually, I've appeared before approximately 65 different boards in different municipalities through about half of the counties across the state. I'm licensed as a professional engineer, as a professional land surveyor, and professional planner by the state of New Jersey. I also hold engineering and land surveying licenses in New York, Connecticut, and Maryland. And for the past 23 or 24 years, I was the chairman of my planning board in my hometown in Highlands, New Jersey.
Well, except your credentials, Mr. Stockton.
Thank you very much. Okay, let me get started. For the record, the Mario Pretta application is for minor subdivision approval of Lot 3 in Block 171. The property is situated in the ARE2 Agricultural Rural Estate 2 Zone District. The subject property is 3.94 acres, measured to the right-of-way line of Asbury Avenue. It's situated along the southerly side of Asbury Avenue between, I guess, between Crow Hill Road, far to the east, and the Freehold Township boundary line, far to the west of the site. The site has the dimensions 740.5 feet along the frontage at Asbury Avenue, 333.7 feet in total along the westerly track limit adjacent to Lot 9.11 in Block 171, 562 feet in total along the southerly track limit, and 197 feet along the easterly track limit adjacent to Lot 2.03 in Block 171. I do have a plan, a minor subdivision plan for the project, and a planning exhibit for the project that, I don't know if we need to mark them, or they've already been submitted. I don't know if they're already marked, but...
They're already marked? Do you need them put up or anything?
For the benefit of the board members, it might not be a bad idea to put up the minor subdivision plan. Okay. So, the minor subdivision plan shows the property. North is towards the top, south is towards the bottom, west is towards the left side, and east is towards the right side of the drawing there. You'll see there's an existing two-story house on the property tucked over towards the west side of the property. It has a long stone and dirt driveway that extends out from the easterly side of the garage all the way out to Asbury Avenue at the northeast corner of the property there. The idea is to subdivide the property, creating two new lots, one for the existing home to remain, and one new building lot for a future home to be constructed at some time in the future. The applicant, Mario Pretta, doesn't have any plans put together yet for any new home yet, but it will be a future building lot for a new home to be built. The bulk of the subject property is wooded right up to the line of Asbury Avenue, and for most of the property, except for an area cleared in front of and behind and off to the sides somewhat of the existing dwelling. The area along Asbury Avenue, I would characterize it as a rural residential area. Asbury Avenue just has existing edge of pavement. There's no curb, no sidewalk anywhere in the neighborhood. And the existing utilities, the home is serviced, wastewater and potable water by well and septic system. There's also natural gas, electric phone and cable TV lines in and along Asbury Avenue. As part of our project work over the course of the last few years, we recently repaired and replaced the existing septic system and the existing well for the existing dwelling. And at that time, we took time with the Monmouth County Board of Health Inspector to advance some test pits on the new proposed building lot to make sure that it would be suitable, which we found it to be, for a future septic system design as well. The idea or the thought behind our proposed subdivision, where we have 3.94 acres, as I mentioned, to the, measured to the right-of-way line of Asbury Avenue, we set the new building lot to meet the minimum two-acre lot size requirement, and left the remainder 1.94 acres to be set up for the existing home to remain. I do have a planning exhibit for the project that I prepared the other day, showing that... Is it coming up?
Yes, give me a minute.
Okay, this planning exhibit that I prepared shows the general character of the neighborhood. Our tract is, it is in color there, but it's a blue shading to it right in the center of the drawing, and I drew a 200-foot envelope around that and a 500-foot envelope around that to depict the lots within the surrounding neighborhood. And I found shaded in red, it looks a little grayish-red in this view to me, but within 200 feet, there are in fact 10 lots that presently don't meet the two-acre minimum lot size. And then within 500 feet, there's a total of 35 lots that don't meet the minimum two-acre lot size in this neighborhood. So what we're proposing is by no means out of character with anything else existing in the neighborhood. And in fact, with our subdivision, the two-acre new building lot and the 1.94-acre lot for the existing home, that 1.94 acres is actually still larger than all 35 of those lots that I have shaded there within 500 feet of the site. So it really is a de minimis variance request, and certainly not out of character with the neighborhood. At our professionals' meeting the other day, we also discussed the need for two specific waivers. One is for the planting of trees along the roadway frontage, and the other is for installing sidewalks along the roadway frontage. And our request is for those waivers to be granted, showing, because we want to keep the existing tree line there along the road frontage and keep the existing rural character of the area, because there's no other sidewalks in the neighborhood there, too. We also discussed that there is one other potential waiver that came out from that meeting, where when you have a driveway that's longer than 150 feet, it's actually supposed to be paved, and we would like to keep the existing stone and dirt driveway where it is in the current location and used by the homeowner or the resident of the existing home until such time that the future home is built on the new building lot. And then the driveway, existing driveway would be reconfigured to provide access and use by the new building lot, remove the segment between the two dwellings, and then reconnect the former driveway loop that used to go out to the northwest corner for use by the existing home.
Mr. Stockton, I have a question for you.
Okay.
So when the new driveways installed after the new homes are done, will it meet the requirement of 18 feet wide and 150 feet deep, so the emergency vehicles could go down, pass each other at the same time?
Yes, if that's a request or requirement or direction by the board, we would certainly make sure that we comply with that.
Only because of the length of the driveway, that's why.
Right. So if you put the minor subdivision plan back up for me?
I mean, he's talking to you.
I know. I'm getting it.
So if you look at the footprint of the existing dwelling, the leg there that sticks out closest to Asbury Avenue is actually the garage area, and it has garage doors already there on the west side and on the east side of the building. So in the future, the driveway extension that comes off from the northwest corner out by Asbury Avenue into the driveway, we can certainly make sure that we make that segment at least 18 feet wide. And then if you... And then, uh, if you can pan over, scroll over towards the. Other side there. The existing entrance to Asbury Avenue is, is already more like. Forty or fifty feet wide. We would, we would cut that down to an appropriate width. And then the segment that comes in to, uh, provide access to the new house. If that ends up being. You know, over, over a hundred-and-fifty feet, we'll make sure to make sure that it's eighteen feet wide as well.
Are you developing that lot? Are you flipping it?
I, I really don't know. I think ultimately Mr. Prada will, will build a house there. But right now he just has no house plans, no, no immediate. Plans to build anything there, but I think ultimately he'll.
Like, the reason that. The reason I'm asking is because you're making commitments on behalf of this lot, and if he flips the lot to someone else to build a home. You know, are we gonna put something in? Like the deed of that property that requires these things because. You know, you don't, you're not showing any improvements on that lot right now.
Right.
So, and he may not build on it. It may, he may sell it, so. How do you plan on enforcing these things that you're agreeing to with no development plan? And you're not technically, you know, you may not be the builder.
Uh, Ms. Beam, I think what we can actually do is if the board chooses to grant approval. We could certainly make conditions. That spell that out i- as conditions of approval. And then on the, um. The plan itself. At our professionals meeting, we talked about how it would be better for. And agreed that we would record the, the map with the county clerk's office. And when I do that, I can put text labels or notes. Right on that map that gets recorded with the county clerk. If that would satisfy the, the board and your, your request there.
I mean, I think it's something that if you guys actually, you know, act favorably at some point. On this, that that's definitely something that should be added to the plat so that. Anybody developing that at some future point would be held to the same. Requirements as is being, you know, presented to you right now.
I, I think we would agree to that. I think that makes perfect sense for the project. Um, one other thing we also talked about too, and as I described in, uh. Uh, the, uh, applicant's. Use of the existing driveway and how it will be reconfigured in the future. When we do ever. Put together a grading plan for a new house to be built on the new building lot. That that grading plan would also show. The segments of the driveway to be removed and the segments of the driveway to be reconstructed on the. Uh, existing. The lot for the existing home as well, so it would still be one large. Grading plan application that would kind of cover that as well too.
Mr. Stockton, what's his, what's, what's his, uh? The existing lot with the house on it, he's, that's gonna come down and be rebuilt or he's, what's the plan?
Well, actually, this, this project for me actually started back in two thousand and eighteen. And, uh, at that time, we, um. Put together a grading plan and a septic system design. And he had an architect on board to do some improvements. And those improvements are work in progress and almost, uh, completed right now. So he, he actually did a. Uh, a building addition, some interior renovations and upgrading to the existing dwelling there. Uh, now, so it's not going to be demolished and removed. It's going to be, uh, something to remain and, uh.
And then, and then the new lot, if it's ever, ever, you know, built. It'll be conforming to the lot size with the seven.
It'll be, it'll be, right, it'll be a two-acre, uh, lot size. Um, there w- will be no problem putting any house within. The setback requirements and we're nowhere near. Maximum building coverage or permitted building coverage or maximum lot coverage with anything we might think of.
Okay.
For it, so. And then the, the thought behind putting the, uh. One-point-nine-four acres with the lot for the existing home to remain was that. How that lot is cleared and how. People will actually live in their rear yard there is pretty much already established. The only thing we really need to do is reconfigure the driveway like I, like I talked about. So it makes sense that that lot, that portion of the project, that lot doesn't need to be any bigger than, uh. Then we shall it.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, I agree, I agree with Mrs., Ms. Beam as far as. All this being put in writing as far as, uh, future if Mr., uh, Prada was to sell. Or someone else was to develop that.
Right.
Not a problem with that.
Fully understand that. That makes, uh, very good sense too.
Does anybody else have comments or questions for that one particular subject or concerns about the driveway? Chief, you're, you're our, our, our safety expert on the team. Do you need a wider driveway and something?
I'm, I'm good with it.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. Um, so the, the, uh. The variance request for our, our diminished lot size variance and the waivers. That we're requesting I think can be granted without impairing the intent or the purpose of the zone plan. Uh, the development regulations and without. Causing any substantial detriment to the public good. And a- as I explained, I think the negative criteria there have been satisfied. Um, in, with regard to the positive criteria. I looked at, uh, the municipal land use law forty-colon-fifty-five D-dash-two. And your ordinance section one-eighty-eight dash-two that deals with the purposes of zoning. And I found the purposes C, E, G, and I. Uh, are certainly advanced by the project design. Um.
You probably want to be a little bit more expansive than just the letters.
The like, okay, so, um. With regard to item C, that is to provide adequate light air and open space. As I mentioned, just mentioned that. Uh. The existing home and. Existing driveway to remain on it and any proposed home or any proposed driveway decks and walkways. Won't come anywhere near the maximum permitted, uh. Building coverage or, uh, or lot coverage. And the new home to be built on the new building lot can easily meet all of the setbacks and that provides. Uh, adequate light air and open space. Um. Item C is to provide, uh. The establishment of appropriate population densities and. Uh, that contribute to the well-being of persons, neighborhoods and communities. And in regard to that comment. Um, I think. Because of the layout of the existing home and the shape of the existing property. With that large side yard area that is underutilized. I think the subdivision actually brings it into better utility. And, uh, we can make that subdivided lot. A conforming lot, and I think that meets that criteria there by bringing it into better utility. That also goes to item, um. G to provide, uh, sufficient space and appropriate, um. Locations for a variety of, of, and including residential uses. Again, what we're proposing is a permitted use in the zone and. The proposed building lot actually brings, uh, the property into better utility a- as well. And then with regard to, um, item I. Propose a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and. A good civic design and arrangement, and that's a, that's a ditto as well. Uh, it brings the underutilized portion of the property into better utility.
Thank you.
Mr. Stockton, quick question. Is the variance being submitted under C-one or C-two of, uh, section seventy?
C-two and it will be, uh, uh, considered like a flexible C-type variance. Um. I'm sure i- if you look at the deeds to the property. And go back through the history, especially with some of these older properties. Um, their boundaries used to extend right to the center line of the road. And if, if we did that. And, and we're able to prove far enough back in the chain of title or back in the, in the deed research. That in actuality, this, this track boundary might extend to the center line of the road. We would in fact be over. Four acres and not in need of a variance even with a, uh. A right-of-way dedication, I would think. But we, we are living with it the way that it is and, uh. I think the request is de minimis because of that, so.
Mr. Chairman, we had had some technical comments in, uh, our report specifically item six on page five. Mr. Stockton, do you agree to comply with those?
Let me see what item six on page five says. Yes, uh, and actually. Most of these items I think are either work in progress or items that have already been addressed as part of our project work. Um, I did get confirmation from the tax assessor that the proposed lot numbering shown on the plan is, is, uh, acceptable. Um. We did for the work that we did with the home improvements to the existing home. We did collect approval from the Freehold Soil Conservation District. I did submit that for the board's records. Um, and we're fully aware that if we need to. Reapply to that agency for any work that we do in the future, we'll certainly take care of that at the time we develop the grading plan. Uh, for the project. Um. I think I mentioned that, uh. As suggested at our professionals meeting, we are going to, I was planning on, on first. Um, perfecting the subdivision by recording deeds. But I, I agree with Ms. Newman that the, uh, eh, the, um. Project would be better suited if we did record the map with the county clerk too. But yes, the remaining comments on, in that, uh, in that review comment, we can certainly address all of them as well.
One other question, would you agree to provide some level, whether it be a dry well. On the new lot when it goes to construction to mitigate stormwater impacts?
Yes, and that, and that's a pretty typical request and a pretty. Common thing for engineers to do. At the time we prepare the grading plan is to address. Um. The increase in stormwater runoff anticipated by the increase in new impervious coverage and. We can certainly do that. We do have good soils on the property, as I mentioned, already. Uh, had, have dug, uh, test pits. Um. On both lots and I know that, uh, ha- we would have no problem, um. Providing some sort of recharge system for stormwater management.
Great, thank you. With that, Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything further.
Okay. I have a question for you, Ms. Newman. The, uh, the topography of this lot looks like most if not all of the, the water. Draining from the home will end up draining onto this new lot. Almost running into the area where the new home will be, uh. Provided. Is there some type of mitigation that may need to go in place? When he does sell the lot?
I think first they're gonna have to start with a grading plan, so obviously to construct a new home, they're gonna have to submit a plot plan with grades. Which are gonna show how they're gonna mitigate any. Drainage impacts or anything of that nature, but my guess is they're gonna modify the grade of this property. And that's why I had just asked Mr. Stockton as well whether or not they would agree to mitigate stormwater impacts at least on their property. But that's something that they will have to address definitely during the plot plan stage. Right now, kind of as Jen had indicated, they haven't laid out a proposed improvement plan. With a minor subdivision, you don't necessarily have to. Um, but you would be subject to a plot plan which we submitted through the engineering department for review and approval.
So there's nothing we have to record for the sale of that land? Or the development of that land now? They worry about that during that development process?
Well, that's correct, and your engineering department reviews it still for compliance with the ordinance and making sure that there's no adverse impacts created.
Okay.
And Chair- Chairman, uh, to add some further gloss on that. One of the conditions the applicant, uh, is agreeing to is that. The conditions of this board's approval, should the board approve this application. Would be printed effectively on the subdivision plat and part, become, uh, you know, part of the title. So that anybody buying either or both of these lots would be put on record notice that. When a hu- new home goes on the new lot, grading will have to be addressed as to both lots.
Right.
So.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions or comments? Okay. I'd like to make a recommendation to the board regards to the language for the driveway. I would feel more comfortable if the language stated that when. The lot is sold. If the lot is sold, lot three-oh-one, then lot three-oh-two would have to put in their driveway at the time before the sale. Can be concluded. That way there's no. No issues in the future. We have a sold lot and then, then someone who bought a lot. Goes and tries to improve it and now they're stuck having to put a driveway in on three-oh-two.
Okay.
I'm not really sure what you mean by that and I, I was just tossing you because. You know. You may have a vision in your mind on how the. House is gonna lay out and where the driveway should be, but it may not be like that when they come in. They have to come to the town for, the, hold on, they have to put these. Requirements as far as what is gonna happen with the driveway when it goes in on the. Plat that gets recorded. And they have to come into the township for a grading plan, a plot plan, et cetera. At which time they have to comply with that. I don't know.
I'm not talking about the new, I'm not talking about the new lot that's created. I'm talking about the dry, existing driveway they're gonna pave. And they said they, let me be, I misunderstood what the applicant was agreeing to do. The existing driveway that's going to serve the, the remaining lot that has a house on it now. He indicated that he would pave that driveway. When the, the new lot that's created actually starts construction. Of that home on that new lot. That's what triggers the, the, the existing driveway getting paved.
And then if the, um. E- exist, or the new building lot is sold and not developed. In that instance, you want to make sure that the driveway on the. Servicing the existing home is built before that sale occurs.
Correct.
That makes good sense too.
Okay, any other further questions? If not, we'll open it to the public. Okay, open it to the public, Eileen.
At this time, the chairman has opened up the hearing for members of the public wishing to ask questions or comment. On this application. Anyone wishing to join the meeting and ask questions or comment, please use the raise your hand feature. And we'll bring you into the meeting.
Okay.
I'm not seeing anyone.
Nobody there?
There's two people on the hall, but they're not raising their hands, so.
Okay, we'll close the public portion. Mr. Stockton, do you have any further last comment?
Uh, I don't, it's, if the board has no further questions, I, I. I think I explained it for everybody and I think, uh. It's going to be a good project if the board chooses to approve it.
Okay. The board has no further questions. I'll entertain a motion. With the, uh, the stipulations and the deed recordings and plot recordings that were discussed. And agreed to.
So, I moved.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much.
Have a good day.
Thank you. Have a good night. Good night.
Okay. Master plan and executive session. I know Mr. Bobai's not here. Mr. Nacastro, anything?
I, I've spoken to, uh, Mr. Bobai and the chairman. I know we're still waiting on, uh, funding. From the council to start this, so it really lays with them. Whether we're gonna be able to move forward on, uh, any kind of master plan, reexamination on any element. I know Paul's trying to do the circulation, uh, plan. To incorporate just more than just our roads, you know, we're looking at, you know. Bicycle paths and, uh, other traffic movements in town. Um, I'm hoping that the council will, uh, agree to have Jennifer Bean. Perhaps join him in a meeting to explain to them what a circulation element encompasses. And maybe, you know, uh. Address some of the concerns I think, uh. A couple of the council members m- may have. I don't want to speak to them, but. It's been a topic of conversation. We do want to get rolling, you know?
Okay.
You know, previously as the chairman, that it's frustrating when you don't have the funding and you can't have meetings.
Yeah, I feel neutered to be honest with you. Yeah, I feel neutered, to be honest with you. The the, we also have to, we also have to possibly start looking at incorporating the updated NRI, National Nat Natural Resource
Thank you.
Inventory document that the Environmental Commission just completed as well. And and if everybody saw the latest letter from Ron, the stormwater, or not the stormwater, but the environmental, I think, impact stuff that I discussed has become law. So every time we touch a an element, we've got another layer of of bureaucracy and stuff that we've gotta pay for. Supposedly, there is some funding available from the DEP and or or some some technical support from the DEP that will help us with that. I don't know if that's something we reach out to, or I have to reach out to that, or Laura or Jen, is that something you guys take care of? How do we, how do we reach out for that technical support?
I mean, we're gonna have to be authorized by the governing body to reach out on behalf of the township, or your business administrator can reach out that, you know, on behalf of the township for potential funding. So, you know, we have to just kind of get their okay. I have no problem reaching out. If that's what the governing body would like to do, they just have to allow me or authorize me to do it.
So I'll ask, I'll reach out to Brian again and ask him what he wants to do and how he wants to handle it.
And Chairman, just one other thing, and Jennifer, you could you could correct me if I'm wrong. I know there's been some conversations amongst council members that the circulation plan, their concern that I've heard, I don't wanna speak for them, was that, you know, the designation of roads changing may open up development to schools and other kind of things. My argument is is that zoning is what controls where things go, not the not the roads, not the designation of roads. Am I correct on that?
That's correct. The designation of roads generally is a factor of the traffic or the trip generation, on how many trips are routinely seen in a given day, the width of the road, the speed limit. But the zoning, you're right, controls the uses along those roadways. So designating a road, let's say in Archeario, doesn't open the door for unbridled development, you still have to comply with the zoning.
Yeah, I agree.
In fact, and in fact, it it it's my opinion that that the analysis may in fact indicate that the roads don't have any more capacity left in them, and and we've got zoning that's inappropriate, and that's my biggest concern, especially considering some of the applications we've seen in the last year or two. And everybody, everybody's getting on our tail in our case about, and I don't mean to be passionate about this, but I'm tired of getting my butt handed to me for stuff that we can't do. Our hands are tied, we can't do a circulation element, but then again, we sit here as a town and complain about the extra traffic for these areas that are properly zoned for these type of applications. I mean, this is crazy. Make a decision. We gotta, we gotta go to work.
Chairman, they're not properly zoned anymore. That's the problem. It might have been properly zoned twenty years ago, not anymore.
But we don't have the data in order to do it.
Right. And I think that's what the chairman's saying, that if we did a circulation element and evaluated the capacity of the road network, it could give us the information that's necessary to perhaps adjust the zoning along those corridors to be consistent with, you know, what the infrastructure can actually handle.
Right.
You know, there's not, you know, it it's very easy to make a statement to say widen the road, but, you know, there's private property, there's right-of-way that has to be acquired. There's an expense associated with that, and the likelihood that that's gonna happen in any significant way i- is probably unlikely, so maybe reevaluating what is permitted and allowed along those corridors, given the constraints, you know, that's kind of forward-thinking that you're gonna need, you know, moving into like the next decade. So that's definitely something that, you know, I agree, given the change in the development patterns over the, at least the past decade. It's something that needs to be looked at, for sure.
So perhaps Councilman, Councilwoman Richmond could relay this back to the governing body and encourage them to have Ms. Bean come and address the councilperson's concern. I think he was giving bad information.
Thank you for the suggestion.
I would just briefly echo everyone's sentiment. I mean, I know when I first got on the planning board and I was on the subcommittee for the master plan, that was one of the first things the Chairman Tannenhaus brought up was the circulation element. We have been pushing to get this done for a long time. And I think it, I think it is necessary, and I do admire Brian's passion for it, so I think that's something we should really push forward on.
And just that everybody knows in my head that, not only, not only for the over, though, to understand where we have development that's no longer appropriate, but I firmly believe that Howell could truly benefit from more bike traffic in some way, shape, or form, that passive recreation. We already have it in Oak Glen Rowan on a really good summer day. It scares scares the living life out of me to drive down some of those roads with the amount of bike traffic that we have that comes to Howell. They're here. They're here. They use the roads, and they're not accounted for in a circulation element.
Well, and also pedestrian traffic, like how often have you heard when someone comes in and requests a waiver for sidewalk, there's no sidewalk in the area, right? And then the question is, you have to start somewhere, and if you had an updated, comprehensive pedestrian circulation plan where, yes, there's no sidewalk on this road now, but we'd like to see it here, we see a lot of pedestrian activity. At least it would give you, you know, something to rely upon to say, no, we want the sidewalk, we don't just want, you know, whatever, the contribution or whatever, that, you know, that factors in. It's not just automobile as as the chairman said, it's bikes, but also the pedestrians and the and the sidewalks. Because I've heard that a million times. I think Laura and I were on a TRC yesterday where they're like, oh, there's no sidewalk in the area, and the bottom line is, you have to start somewhere at some point, otherwise there will never be sidewalk in the area. So that's part of that element as well.
So Jen, would you mind, um, to Mr. Nacastro's point? I would like to invite you to meet with the council, and I don't know if that would entail coming on to a council meeting, maybe doing a a presentation of some sort, because I I'm with you guys on this, and I've been pushing for it as well. But some people are afraid of what, I guess, may come out through the circulation plan, which I think is another misconception. Like Mr. Nacastro said, it's it's, oh, it's a misconception, and they need to see the other side of it and the positives to it. And I think from speaking to a lot of people about it, I think there are a lot of positives that can help us fight this fight that everybody wants us to fight, but we have no data to back it up.
A hundred percent. I I, yes, I a hundred percent will have no problem, whether it's speaking to the council people individually, coming to a council meeting, whatever you need, you just let me know.
I will. I'll speak to the manager when he returns, and then we'll reach out to you and we'll see what's best individually. I think I I personally would like you to come to the council meeting, so the public can also hear what you have to say, and, you know, as a professional, I think people will respect that, and instead of it just coming from me or Mr. Nacastro or somebody, it comes from you, and you're gonna validate the fact that we want this done, and, you know, they wanna spend money on other things here. I think this is where the money is is gonna be best spent for the future of Howell.
No problem. You just let me know.
Okay, I will. Thank you.
Councilwoman Richmond, I'd like to make a suggestion in changing your 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 wording just a little bit. Not that we want it done.
Go ahead.
We think it needs to be done.
It's needed. Okay, yeah.
We think it's
We need it done. I agree.
Not necessarily wanting.
Okay. I think a little bit of both, maybe.
I will say, though, it, you know, it, we've looked at the language element in town a lot over the course of however many years, and then obviously, the housing plan was just recently done. But the circulation element is is seriously dated. Things have significantly changed in town since it was last done. And, you know, I I agree that it's time to relook, so you let me know what works best for you, and I will make myself available.
Okay, I I'd like to do it the sooner the better. I I mean, I
Yep, understand.
Tuesday, but I I think that may be too soon, but within within the, you know, maybe the next meeting after that, because I think it's really important for us to jump on this, and the longer we wait, longer we drag our feet, the more, the more it becomes a problem for us, and and it needs, definitely needs to be done. No problem. Thank you so much.
Councilwoman Richmond?
Yes, Mr. Leggio.
Would you think it would be wise to include the zoning, the zoning board chair with any of these, you know, decisions that are gonna be made, and because, you know, like, like, like our chair said, a lot of stuff goes through them first, and if they allow a zoning change from like an AR two or an AR six to to something, you know, to something else for an office building, and it's on one of these backroads leading, leading back to residential, that's our issue, correct?
So with that said, I think, I think this is just Jen coming and convincing the entire governing body through this, and then once we decide if we're gonna do it, do it, and then everybody has to come to the table, I I think, zoning, planning, and we have to, you know, come up with a good plan, but I think the first step is getting the governing body on board and getting this done ASAP. And then, yes, of course, we'll we'll invite all the, you know, the main players to the table, I think.
I agree. I think that's a better way to handle it. You know, the the difference between the zoning board and the planning board is that you guys are responsible to adopt these master plan elements, and the zoning board is not, so that's kind of, I think, why the conversation is is a little bit more involved here, but I do agree that what, you know, if and when the governing body decides that this is an avenue they wanna go to, there's a number of key stakeholders that would have to be brought into the process during the element, you know, preparation to to listen to the concerns and the complaints. I do sit on the zoning board as well, so I do generally have a pretty good idea of what they're, they've been dealing with lately. But I do think that you you're gonna have some key stakeholders from a variety of locations, zoning and other other entities that probably would have to be incorporated when the governing body, I'm not even gonna say if, I'll say when the government determines that this is the avenue to go down. So but I do agree that the first stop is the governing body, and then we can bring in whomever we need from there.
And I think, I think when Jen explains it the way, you know, we, I see it, and I know the Mr. Nacastro sees it, and and Mr. Bovai, that it's a good thing for the town, and when they see that it's not what they perceived it to be or what they were told in the past, because it's ten years old or whatever, I I I'm pretty confident that that we can move forward with it, but they just need to hear the positives of this and not always the negative of it. Does that, does that answer your question?
No, I I agree. I think it's
Pam, I'm on that committee too. I'm on a committee with with the Castro and Bovai. And I haven't heard anything from Bovai or the Castro, you know, the two of them talk or not talk all the time, whatever. They're just waiting, they're waiting for us to get some, you know, the funding so we could go public with it, which is great. I I agree a hundred percent with that, but I wanna be, I wanna be included if they're gonna, you wanna meet, meet and talk about it before it goes public, you know what I mean? I just, you know, why was I put on? Yeah, that's all I'm saying, yeah.
Well, there's no, and there's no implication that 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 there's been meetings and talks about.
No, I must say there has been, but but Mr. Bovai's made some comments on how happenings, you know, arguing with some of our township residents about this, you know, and he and he made it clear that we haven't had no meetings, no public meetings, obviously. And it just doesn't look good, you know, I mean, that we should, that that should be refrained from, you know what I mean? You know, a lot of people in this town have a big issue with some of our council members and some of the people on the planning board. You know that, so. That's all.
I think that the the process, from a procedural standpoint, let's start with the governing body, get authorization to move forward, then the process will start at like the planning, the master plan subcommittee meetings, which you know, when I was on this board years ago, was like a regularly scheduled thing, like once a month. And then there's gonna be a lot of work done prior to it becoming public, because it's it's very dated, so I understand your frustration, and I will ensure that, like, once we get the authorization to move forward, that we do it in the in the right way. You know, we do it through the subcommittee, bring in the relevant stakeholders as needed, and then have a series, you know, whether or not, you know, we're gonna have a series of public input sessions just to make sure that it's a transparent process. It's not gonna be done in a vacuum, but there is some things that, there are some things, I'm sorry, that have to happen, you know, in the subcommittee outside the public realm.
Yeah, behind the scenes, I understand.
Otherwise, we'll never get anything done, but a hundred percent, there will be a public process associated with it, and then ultimately, you guys at the planning board would have to adopt it as an element of the master plan, which is a public process as well. So let's start, you know, with, you know, getting, I guess, Councilwoman Richmond, you're gonna reach out and and try to facilitate me coming to the, either the council meeting or whatever interaction that they choose as step one. I can report back to you as a body at the next meeting to see where we've gone. Hopefully, we will have at least have a a meeting date or some kind of process at that point, and then we'll go from there. But I do think there's a lot of things to talk about, but we have to get authorized first.
Yeah, and that, and and, you know, what Jen is saying, and I I concur, there's no reason to publicize anything while everybody, you know, we are very transparent, and and for people to say that we're not is is unfair. And I think that's where Paul's frustration is, because, you know, behind, you know, backdoor meetings and all this stuff, which isn't really true. There's a little talk here and there, but there's never been anything formalized, and anytime we do do it, it's always advertised or it's put out there. And again, the frustration is, and Paul has said it a couple of times in the last few meetings, Councilwoman Bonovich and and the mayor are not on board with it, and and I don't blame them, they don't have all the information. So we just, they deserve us to, you know, get someone, the professionals in there to give them both sides of it, and then hopefully, they can get on board and we can move ahead. That's where, that's where the frustration is on everybody's side.
Well, Pam, you need to use your leadership skills, get what you, get what your buddy Russo and 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 let's get, let's get this to to go on, you know what I mean?
I have, I have no friends and I have no buddies.
You know. You gotta work together. You gotta try to work together.
You guys, as soon as I know something, you all know something, and I will reach out to Jen first.
Okay.
Thank you, Jen.
Fantastic. I appreciate, I really appreciate everybody's time in indulging us to talk about this subject. Appreciate it. Anybody got anything else they'd like to talk about? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion.
Okay. All favor? Hi.
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 Have a good night. Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Everybody.